Okay, thank you. That's the Medfield Jazz Band. And the Medfield High School Jazz Band has been consistently recognized at the district, and the state, and the national levels for its excellence. The Jazz Band consists of 20 Medfield High School students. Was recently chosen of one of three bands nationwide to perform at the Charles Mingus Finals in New York City. This past Sunday, the band received its 13th consecutive gold medal at the State Jazz Festival, led by Maestro Doug Olson. Thank you guys so much. Congratulations. Okay, well, thank you very much for being here. It's always a sure sign of spring when we get into town meeting season. A welcome spring this year. I am Scott McDermott. I'm your town moderator. I'm very honored to be here to preside over tonight's meeting. Since 1651, the residents of this town have come together as a community to decide the issues of great importance, and we continue that tradition tonight as we determine the issues of appropriation and funding for major projects of strategic and final financial consequence for our town. I'm advised by our town clerk that we have a quorum present. Thank you all. Thank you very much. Tonight, we have two articles to address as the legislative body of the town of Medfield. I will now ask our town clerk to read the return of service of the warrant.
By virtue of this warrant, I have notified and warned the inhabitants of the town of Medfield qualified to vote in elections and at town meetings by posting attested copies of the same at five public places 14 days before the date of the special town meeting as within directed dated 2/1815, Constable Paul Curran.
Okay, thank you. Please stand if you would. Okay, I'm very pleased to introduce tonight Medfield High School Senior Julia Clifford. Julia is a member of our chorus and our jazz choir, where she serves as a section leader. She has taken private voice lessons for four years and will be majoring in music in college, and she's going to lead us in our national anthem. Very pleased to introduce Elizabeth Mann, who's going to lead the town in the Pledge of Allegiance. Mrs. Mann came to Medfield directly from Germany in 1954. She has been a crossing guard in Medfield for 50 years. In the early 1950s, Elizabeth Berlin was introduced to U.S. Military Policeman William Mann. They were married and moved to William's hometown of Medfield. And at the time Elizabeth relocated to Medfield, there were about 3,000 residents. I think 2,000 were at the Medfield State Hospital. All three of her children and two of her grandchildren went to the Medfield Public Schools. We're honored to have Elizabeth Mann lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I have to tell you, I've talked to people whose kids could not wait to get back to school in September after summer off, so they'd have an opportunity to see Mrs. Mann again, which is a great tribute. And thank you so much for 50 years as a smiling crossing guard. Okay, I first have the honor of introducing our town clerk, Carol Mayer. And then, consistent with our tradition, I would ask the chairman of the Board of Selectmen, Osler Pete Peterson, to introduce the executive branch of our government.
Sitting next to Carol Mayer is Evelyn Clark, the assistant in the selectmen's office. Next to Evelyn is Christine Trewiler, the assistant town administrator. Next to me is Mike Sullivan, our town administrator. On my right is Richard De Sorga, our newest selectman. Oh, well, no, I'm sorry. Our oldest selectman, from 30 years ago. Our newest and oldest selectman. And next to him is Mark Fisher, and then town council Mark Sorrell.
Thank you. I will now ask Michael Marcucci, who's chairman of the warrant committee, to introduce the members of the warrant committee.
Thank you. To my left, Gus Murby, Greg Sullivan, Sharon Tetrow, Martha Festa, Barbara Gips, and Tom Marie.
Thank you. At this time, I would make a motion to permit non-voting participants to sit within the town meeting and to speak to the community as requested. We reserve a special visitor section of the meeting for this purpose. Thank you all for being here, and I would ask Evelyn Clark, please, if she would, to read the names of our visitors.
Jeffrey Marsden, superintendent of schools. Kenneth Feeney, superintendent of public works. Christine Trewiler, assistant town administrator. Mark Sorrell, town council. Joy Richudo, town accountant. John Nath, building commissioner. Sarah Raposa, town planner. Andrew Seaman, energy and facilities manager. Alan Peterson, school department plant manager and consultants. Shane Nolan from Daedalus. Rick Almeida, door and whittier architects. Don Walter, door and whittier architects. And Margaret Campbell, solar design associates.
And I would like to, as a special note of appreciation, welcome Representative Denise Garlick, and thank Denise for being here. Say hello to Denise. Thank you. Denise is amazing. She's everywhere, in fact. So, thanks again for being here. I would move that these non-voting guests sitting in the visitor section be permitted to join our town meeting and to speak to the community as requested. All in favor, please say aye. The vote carries. I would now ask that anyone else sitting anywhere within this town meeting who is not a registered voter of Medfield, or anybody who did not go through the registration process administered by the town clerk and the registrars, please remove yourself to the visitor section. At this time, I make a standard motion. I make a standard motion to make more than one speaker per article and to allow for the extension of time at the discretion of the moderator for discussion of motions. All in favor, please say aye. And the motion carries. I'll now direct your attention to the printed guidelines of the meeting. Essentially, these guidelines are very similar to the meeting guidelines that we employ at our annual town meeting. We formulate the guidelines. They're designed to combine a blend of common principles of fairness, prudence, expedience, respectful and informative dialogue, to provide for the consideration of the best interests of our community, to consider past precedent, and to allow for my judgment and discretion as the moderator, who must stand for election on an annual basis, and who has the statutory responsibility for determining the best procedures to govern our special town meeting. I will quickly review the proceedings of tonight's meeting. The guidelines are printed. As a matter of proceedings, we will begin with Article One. Article One is an article around the solar photovoltaic array installation at the wastewater plant. We will first have a positive motion from the warrant committee, followed by a majority report from the warrant committee. We will have a presentation from the Medfield Energy Committee and comments from the Board of Water and Sewer. Right after that, the procedure will be for both Article One and Article Two, is that I will open the floor at that microphone. Microphone number one, for factual questions or points of clarification only. So, first time that we call folks to the microphone, it will be for factual questions and points of clarification. After those questions have been exhausted, we will then open the floor to debate. I'll ask proponents to go to microphone number one and opponents to go to microphone number two, so we can determine the depth of the sentiment on each article, and then we will terminate the floor debate. We will vote on the motion on Article One. A two-thirds vote is required for passage. We will then move to Article Two. Article Two is the article providing for the appropriation of funds for the public safety building. Again, we will go to the warrant committee for a positive motion on Article Two, and they will provide a majority report on Article Two. Then we will have a presentation from the Permanent Planning and Building Committee. That will be followed by comments from each member of our Board of Selectmen, and also comments from our town administrator. At that point, we'll go back and open the floor for factual questions or points of clarification to any of the folks that have addressed the town meeting. Any kinds of questions or points of clarification will be in order. After those questions have been responded to, we'll open the floor for the dialogue on this issue. And the dialogue will have proponents at one microphone and opponents of the motion at the other dialogue. Excuse me. We hope that we'll have an opportunity for everybody who would like to address the town to be able to speak. I will impose reasonable time limits, and I appreciate your respect for those time limits. At that point, we will terminate the floor debate. We will vote on Article Two. A two-thirds vote is required. In order to be passed, if the motion does pass, is in Article Two, it requires a majority vote at the town election on March 30th. And I will be reminding you about the voting on March 30th as we get to that point in the meeting. At that point, I will thank you all, and I'll entertain a motion for dissolving the special town meeting. Are there any questions? Ready to go? Question? Does not. Does not require approval by a vote next week. Okay. Mr. Sullivan, do we have a positive motion on Article One?
We do. Motion, Article One, move that $700,000 be appropriated for designing, constructing, and equipping a solar voltaic array at the wastewater treatment plant, including any utility interconnected fees or charges, including all costs incidental or related thereto, that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer collector with the approval of the Board of Selectmen be authorized to borrow $700,000 under general law C-44, Section 7, 3B, or any other enabling authority, that the Board of Selectmen, the Water and Sewer Board, the Medfield Energy Committee, the Energy Facilities Manager, and the Superintendent of Public Works be authorized to expend said funds and to enter into contracts with the federal government, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and/or private contractors to accomplish said purpose, and that the Board of Selectmen, the Water and Sewer Board, the Medfield Energy Committee, the Energy Facilities Manager, and the Superintendent of Public Works be authorized to take any other action necessary or convenient to carry out this project.
Okay, do you have a report on the motion?
We do. The warrant committee has unanimously voted in favor of passage of the warrant for the installation of a photovoltaic array at the wastewater treatment plant. The construction of these solar arrays will provide the wastewater treatment plant with a significant portion of its electrical needs, saving the town a significant amount of money on utility cost. In addition to these costs, the town will receive money directly from the sale of solar credits through the Massachusetts Solar Renewable Energy Credit, SREC, market for the next 10 years. This market is where public utilities can meet their state mandated solar energy generation requirements by purchasing these credits. With the electric cost savings and the money generated from the state's energy credits, the town will bring in more money than would be expended for the cost of energy for the wastewater treatment plant. This additional money will be placed into the sewer enterprise fund, thereby contributing to lower sewer rates. By installing these photovoltaic array systems, the town will receive a positive annual cash flow from the very first day it's put into service. This will give the town an immediate positive return on its investment, something unheard of in almost any investment environment. This would be the first warrant article in memory to actually make the town money.
All in favor?
The warrant committee strongly recommends passage of this article for the design and construction of a photovoltaic solar array.
Okay, and I would like to introduce Andrew Seaman, who is the Energy and Facilities Manager for the town of Medfield, who's going to provide a report.
Good evening. My name is Andrew Seaman, and I'm the Energy and Facilities Manager for the town of Medfield, speaking on behalf of the Medfield Energy Committee. I'll give you first a project background on this solar photovoltaic array. The Medfield Energy Committee is charged with finding ways to reduce energy consumption in the town. A grant was made available from the Department of Energy Resources to design and construct solar panels specifically at wastewater treatment facilities in the Commonwealth. Upon approval of this grant, a feasibility study was conducted to determine the size of the array and financial benefits to the town. This study was completed in November of 2014 and concluded the project would generate positive revenue for the town in the very first year of operation. The wastewater treatment plant is located at 99 Old Bridge Road, also known as West Road, right behind Electric Time. It treats an average of 800,000 gallons of wastewater per day, resulting in annual electricity consumption of 770,000 kilowatt hours in 2014. That makes it the second largest electricity consumer in the town behind the high school. The total cost of electricity for the plant in 2014 was approximately $117,000. This is the site plan. You can see outlined in red. That is the area where the panels would lay. 714 panels would create 232 kilowatts of power, facing due south to capture the maximum amount of sunlight, and be mounted approximately three feet off the ground. It would generate approximately 270,000 kilowatt hours electricity per year. This will offset 36% of plant consumption and result in electrical savings of $43,200 in the first year alone. And these panels come with a 20- to 30-year useful life. In addition to energy savings, there's also solar renewable energy credits. These are credits that are issued by the state to generators of renewable electricity. One SREC is issued, will be issued to the town for every 1,000 kilowatt hours of renewable energy created. These credits are guaranteed for 10 years and are renewed annually. The current price of one SREC is $228. And actually, as I was just informed today, there was an SREC sale that had these credits going for $350. So, the absolute minimum that we could receive from these SRECs are $228. In the first year, the array is projected to create 270 SRECs, and that will result in positive cash of $61,000 for the town. Now, I want to talk just a little bit about this state grant that we received. It will cover 15% of all installation costs, including system design, construction documents, utility interconnection, and construction and system commissioning. However, the grant will expire in April 2016. If we don't use it by then, this money will be gone. The remaining balance of the project will be financed through a 10-year bond sale. This is an outline of the costs of the project. Install costs will be approximately $700,000. 696,000. With the analysis, geotechnical analysis includes soil samples, engineering, design, bidding, the RFP, that will total 734,000. 15% of that comes from the grant, so the total cost of the town will be $624,000. This chart outlines in red the debt service and maintenance that will be required for the panels versus the electrical savings that will be generated along with the SREC income. You can see in the first year, that difference is $21,000. It slightly declines year after year due to the SRECs declining a little bit of value. But throughout the entire 20-year process, this remains a positive cash flow for the town. So, when could this actually happen? If approved tonight, construction documents will be completed in May. We'll receive the bids in June, review the bids, and select a contractor in the middle of the summer, begin construction in September, and then November, construction is anticipated to be completed, and the system will be online generating electricity for the plant. So, the bottom line is that there is a net positive cash flow of $19,000 in the first year. This increases to $23,000 at year 10. And once the debt is retired at year 10, the town continues to realize additional electrical savings for at least an additional 10 years. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have a comment from the Water and Sewer Board?
Thank you. My name is Christian Carpenter. I'm on the Board of Water and Sewerage with Jeremy Marsette, our chairman, and Bill Harvey. And I just wanted to make a couple of comments on behalf of the board. First of all, I do want to thank you, Andrew, and the Energy Committee, and Bob McDonald, who is the lead operator at the wastewater treatment plant. All of them did a lot of work to try to bring this to fruition, and I think they've come up with what could really be a great project for the town. Four points that I wanted to make that sort of comprise the reasons that the board supports the project. First one is, we do support the Energy Committee's overall goal of reducing energy consumption and making our energy consumption less expensive for the town, and this certainly fulfills that goal. The project is absolutely an opportunity to reduce the cost of operating that wastewater treatment plant. And as all of you can relate, you know, part of what you're paying in your sewerage bills is the cost of that electricity. So, if we can reduce that, our goal is to minimize impact on rates going forward using that reduced electrical consumption or electrical purchase. The facility is going to be built on property that's available at the wastewater treatment plant. It's not being used today. It's not needed for any expansion, and it's not needed for any storage. So, we're taking advantage of valuable property that's already available to us. And finally, over the long term, as I mentioned earlier, as this project goes very cash flow positive when the debt has been paid off, we do see an opportunity to continue to provide very high level of service from the wastewater treatment plant with less of an impact on your rates. So, for those reasons, we support the project, and we certainly hope the town will do so as well. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. If there are any questions or need for points of clarification, you can go to microphone number one or two. We have a question at microphone number one.
Gary Wheeler, 20 Cross Street. Considering this wonderful winter that we just had, I would like to know technically if this kind of array is going to, first of all, survive the kind of snowfalls that we had, and what the impact is going to have on the amount of electricity it's going to generate?
Thank you for your question. The analysis as far as the amount of electricity that the panels can generate, that is all taken into account, the winter seasonal adjustments due to snowfall, and, you know, sunlight cloudiness, that's all taken into effect as how much electricity these panels can actually generate. If there's any snowfall that happens, we've had a lot of snowfall. There's been, you know, eight feet or something like that this year. It's abnormal, but these panels will be three feet off the ground. And if there is some snow that does fall on the panels, it's very easy to just go and clean them off, and once the panels start to warm up and produce electricity again, the snow just slides right off as it's melted.
Okay, so you took an average expected kilowatt retrieve as opposed to maximum if we had, if we were down in Florida?
Yes, sir. That's right. Yeah, it's average throughout the year.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? Microphone number one.
Cross Street as well, Robert Herbsuber, number seven. I'm just concerned, since this is going to be a profit from the start, from the inception, as someone who's still on a septic and not on sewer and won't necessarily see any benefit from this, that means there is no increase to the tax rate in town due to this project, since it is a, like, how does that, what's the net benefit we're going to see?
That's a question I don't think I can answer specifically, if I could turn that over to somebody else.
Mr. Sullivan?
The sewer treatment plant is funded entirely through the Sewer Enterprise Fund, and the revenues for that are generated entirely through the sewer use charge. So, there is no impact on the property tax rate, either on the revenue side or on the cost side. So, the benefit will accrue to people hooked into sewer because it will be reflected in either a lower rate increase or a rate decrease, and there will be no benefit to the property taxpayer because they pay nothing towards that cost.
Okay, thank you. Microphone number two.
Hello. I'm Don Bush, 12 Carmen Circle. My question was, there are no batteries planned on the site, correct?
That's correct.
So, I'm a little, you might clarify a bit for me, the power generation expected during a day versus the sewerage treatment plant power demands in a given day? So, I guess at different times of day, you're going to have more surplus? And I'm wondering if your statistics considered that?
Yes, sir. Actually, the consumption at the plant, the panels will never generate enough to compensate for all the electricity consumed at the plant, no matter what, no matter what they're doing. No matter if the sun is shining the entire time, the plant will always be consuming some kind of electricity. These panels are just designed to offset those costs.
Right. So, at noon time, the plant is going to be running more cheaply per gallon than at midnight, right?
So to speak, yeah. And at noon, you will, the plant will still be drawing from the grid. Will not be relying completely on the panels.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. If there are no more questions, opponents and proponents want to come to microphone number one or two? If there are no comments, we'll put it to a vote. We'll put the article offered by Mr. Sullivan to a vote. Requires two-thirds. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed? I'll deem it passed by the required two-thirds vote. Thank you very much. That moves us to article number two, the article regarding the construction of a public safety building, and I would ask for a positive motion from the warrant committee on Article Two. Mr. Sullivan?
Article Two, move that $18,750,000 be appropriated for the construction, equipping, furnishing, and landscaping a public safety building, including associated parking and communications facilities, and expenses related to the temporary relocation of the police and fire departments, and a provision of a parking lot for the staff of the Dale Street School. Said building to be located at the site of the present police and fire stations at the intersection of North and Dale Streets, including all costs incidental and related thereto, that to meet this appropriation, $750,000 be appropriated pursuant to GL-44, Section 20, from the unexpended balance of funds borrowed under Article 27 of the 213 annual town meeting for the construction of the public works facility, which project is completed and no liability remains, and the treasurer collector with the approval of the Board of Selectmen be authorized to borrow $18 million under general law 44, Section 7, 3, or any other enabling authority, and that the Board of Selectmen, the Permanent Planning and Building Committee...
Planning and Building Committee, and the Chief of Police and the Fire Chief be authorized to expend said funds and to enter into contracts with the federal government, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and/or private contractors to accomplish said purposes. And that the Board of Selectmen, the Permanent Planning and Building Committee, and the Chief of Police and the Fire Chief be authorized to take any other action necessary or convenient to carry out this project, provided however that the appropriation authorized under this article be contingent upon the town voting to exempt from the limitation on total taxes imposed by GLC 59, Section 21(c), Proposition 2.5, amounts required to pay the principal of an interest on the borrowing authorized by this vote.
And do you have a report, please?
We do. The Warrant Committee has unanimously voted in favor of passage of the warrant for the construction of a new public safety building. The Warrant Committee members all strongly agree that the town is in dire need of a new public safety building, as the existing building is much too small and is in very poor condition, bordering on the dangerous. The Committee also believes that now is the right time to build the new public safety building, and this is the right building for Medfield. The new public safety building is designed to meet the latest requirements and standards for law enforcement, firefighting, and medical response services. The building was also designed to be able to accommodate foreseeable changes in both the police and fire departments over the next 20 years and serve the town for the next 50 years. Constructing a building only to the department's present needs does not allow for any future expansion or improvements to any of the departments. This would require additions to the building in the not-too-distant future that would end up costing the town more money in the long run. These additions would also likely cause disruptions to the functioning of the police and fire departments. The Warrant Committee recognizes that buildings of, of the type required by police and fire departments are more expensive than other typical buildings of the same size. Based on the analysis provided by the Permanent Building Committee, the Warrant Committee is satisfied that the estimated cost of this building is in line with the cost of other similarly sized public safety buildings that were built recently. The low construction bid recently submitted for the project has come in under the estimated budget. The Warrant Committee believes that this is a particularly appropriate time to move ahead with this project from a financial standpoint. Our present attractive economic environment for construction will not continue indefinitely. The general economy is improving, and with it, so will the cost of construction. A delay in approving this project risks having the town face significantly escalating construction costs, as the cost of construction is, is projected to increase faster than inflation. We also believe that the favorable bonding environment for financing of the new building will be coming to an end, and we therefore risk higher financing, higher financing costs if we delay. As many of you may remember, the town's experience in the delay of the new DPW building, when the town initially voted down the DPW building, deemed too big, the Permanent Building Committee had the building size reduced, incurring additional design costs. Because of the delay in the approval of the DPW building, the cost of construction had risen such that the town ended up paying the same price for a smaller building. We believe that any delays in the pursuit of incremental cost savings from this building project will be more than offset by cost increases in construction and financing costs that result from those delays. The Warrant Committee believes that this building will be one of the most important buildings in town and should reflect its importance in its outward appearance. The building will contain not only our public safety services, but will provide a secure environment for the town's computer servers, and will provide public function rooms to the town and its citizens. This building will be the only building in town that will be open and functioning 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year, and as such, will be used as the emergency management center for the town during times of crisis. The public safety building will become a landmark building in town, will be the anchor building for the new developing municipal center at the Dale Street and North Street intersection that will include the FAF Center and the Dale Street School, linking these town buildings to the downtown. The public safety building will also serve as an architectural gateway into and out of the downtown via North Street. We feel that its strong architectural presence is important to the overall character of the town. The Warrant Committee feels that the Medfield Permanent Building Committee has provided the town with a public safety building that is appropriately sized for the present and future requirements of both departments, that the location and design of the building reinforces the importance of such a building requires in the community, and will enhance the built environment in this part of town, and that the cost of the building is reasonable for, for its building type and size. The Warrant Committee strongly recommends passage of this article for the construction of a new public safety building.
Okay, well, thank you. Now, I'm going to invite the members of the Permanent Planning and Building Committee, and Chief William Kingsbury, and Chief Robert Meany to join us up here on the stage, if you would. Thank you, and thank you to the Warrant Committee. Could I ask the members of the Permanent Building and Planning Committee to please introduce themselves?
I'm Tim Boncotti, member of the Permanent Building Committee.
Mike Quinlan, co-chair, Medfield Permanent Building Committee.
Lou Filani with the Building Committee.
I am Tom Erb with the Building Committee.
Bob Meany, Police Chief.
Bill Kingsbury, Fire Chief.
John Nunry, Building Committee.
Okay, and I'm going to ask John, if you would, to provide the presentation.
Sure. So, good evening, and thank you for attending this important, special town meeting on the construction funding for the proposed new public safety facility. My name is John Nunry, and I co-chair the Medfield Permanent Building Committee. Collectively, this committee is almost 100 years of experience in public sector design and construction. All the members are current residents of the town of Medfield. We have worked together since the DPW project. We have been appointed by the Board of Selectmen, and we volunteer our time. Most importantly, like you, we all pay taxes. As a committee, our guiding principles for this project was to design a building that meets the current and future needs of this town. We designed it in such a way that space is used efficiently and that costs are kept to a minimum. We're proposing a building made of materials and systems that would ensure not only low operational costs, but require as little maintenance as possible. Now, I'd like to turn to some history surrounding this project. The public safety facility is the next priority project on the town's capital plan after the DPW facility. Planning for this project, along with the DPW, the Council on Aging, and the Park and Rec FAF Center, date back to July of 2000, 15 years ago, when the Board of Selectmen established the Municipal Planning and Building Committee. The mission of that committee was to, quote, "review certain existing municipal buildings to assess the capital needs of the users of these buildings and to provide recommendations how those, how those needs should be accommodated in the next 20 years to provide a long-term plan for the town's municipal growth," end quote. It was determined then that the Fire Department building did not provide enough space for such, for items such as apparatus, hazardous material storage, decontamination facilities, bunking and dining areas. It was estimated that the station would need to triple in size to meet the town's needs. It was also determined that the current staff space for the Police Department was woefully inadequate for the current number of employees and the nature of police business, much less allowing for future growth. In 2007, the Medfield Capital Building and Planning Committee was formed as an advisory to the Board of Selectmen. And in their 2008 report to the Selectmen, the number-one conclusion was that, quote, "In all cases, the current existing facilities are either outdated, over capacity, or in such general disrepair that new facilities will need to be built in the relative near term. There have been no meaningful renovations in the 30 to 45 years since they were originally built," end quote. And this was referring to the DPW building, the Police-Fire Building, and the FAF Center. In 2008, we saw the near global collapse of our financial markets. With that came a hold on any Medfield, any of Medfield's major capital facility improvements. In late 2012, with the markets in a sufficient rebound, the planning for this project commenced when HKT Architects was hired to prepare a feasibility study for a new combined police and fire facility and a planning study for the Dale Street area. The conclusions of that study laid the foundations for the design work that followed. This include a new combination police-fire facility at the current site, a new teachers' parking lot to be constructed between the existing Dale Street School and the FAF Center, and a vertical element on the northwest corner of Dale Street to identify this area as the gateway to the town center. This is the origins of the clock tower design, which you will see. As architecture is a direct representation of the mores and values of a society, the building's design speaks to the necessity of civic presence. Given the importance of public safety in our society today, it is essential that this building express the reverence and civic pride we feel towards those who protect our safety. In 2013, after a success, after a successful town meeting vote to appropriate funds to bring the project to 50% design development, we then hired the architectural firm Door Whittier as the architect of record for this project. Their partner firm in Cincinnati, Ohio, CR Architecture and Design, is an architectural firm with a national reputation for excellence in design and construction of public safety facilities. At the town meeting in April of 2014, we reported on our progress and presented an overall project cost of approximately $19 million, which is exactly what we reported at the 2013 town meeting. Town meeting voted an additional $850,000 to complete the documents and bid the project with the understanding that we would come back to town meeting in 2015 with bids in hand and requests, and a request for full construction funds. Since that town meeting, we have completed the construction documents and have had an additional three cost estimates performed. Over the course of the project, we have held over 50 public meetings. Also, over the course of designing the project, we engaged in value engineering that resulted in nearly $500,000 in savings. We have bid the project and are happy to report that the overall project budget is now $1 million lower than the $19 million estimate, estimate that we noted at town meeting in 2014. The Board of Selectmen, the Warrant Committee, the School Committee, and the Historic Commission have all voted in support of this project. Later, after this presentation, the moderator will call for discussion and then vote on this warrant article. To understand a little more about the challenges our public safety officials face, I'll turn to Chief Meany and Chief Kingsbury. Mike Quinlan will then walk through the design and discussion about the financial costs associated with this project. Chief Meany?
Good evening. Thank you for being here. Just a brief tour through the current facility. If, for those of you who may not have seen it, hopefully none of you have seen it from a negative perspective. This is the, this is the backyard. One of the issues that became a more prominent problem this year is there's a dip from North Street to the bottom and back up again. Thank you very much, the DPW, for coming down and sanding and salting so that we get the vehicles out of there. It was very helpful. The other thing that you notice is that if we bring a prisoner in, that's where the cruiser sits that they're unloaded from. The problem being, and it's never happened, knock on wood, that down there you can go about 15 feet. So that's a couple of the issues from there. Then you go inside, and you go past the open stairway. People have gone down the open stairway. Not me personally, but that has occurred. From there, and you go to our booking area. The booking area is, you know, we do the best we can with it and whatnot. However, one of the things we have, as you'll notice, we have a very high-tech records maintenance system here, a cutoff mailbox where the officers can put in their reports and slips and whatnot and memos. The area right there is where you secure your firearms before you start taking the handcuffs off and dealing with a prisoner. And then underneath, that would be found perhaps in a college dorm or down in your garage. It's also what we use to retain evidence from sexual assault kits and blood testing and whatnot that has been done at the hospital. This is a multi-function room. All the rooms in the building, with the exception of the, the booking area and the garage downstairs, have pretty well been repurposed at least twice, twice, sometimes three times. This is our interview room. The animal control officer also uses this. It's also the copy machine room. We had, up until a year ago, a Coke machine there. Two good things happened. One of the guys decided they didn't want to drink Coke anymore and sugary drinks, so we got rid of that. The other thing is that we could actually hear the recordings made of interviews, because what we found when we get over to the DA's office is that sometimes when that unit came on, you could no longer hear the interview. Very awkward, very embarrassing. From here, we go into what was originally, when the building was first put up, Chief Mail will remember this, because he worked hard on getting this building put together and really did a great job, because remember, we came out of just the first floor, left-hand side of a town hall where the assessor's office is. So this is a big jump. This is a huge jump in progress, but we're ready for the next one. So this is now our dispatch area. We have redesigned this probably three times, most recently about a year and a half ago, to accommodate the changing E911 requirements, requirements for closed-circuit cameras and monitoring, and this. Now, this is our classroom building downstairs. This is originally part of the garage. The building was a little bit of, excuse me, a little bit of renovation was done to it in the early 90s, and we ended up with this classroom. Now, one of the things I want you to take note of is down at the end, there's a door, and that's what's outside the, the classroom, the lunchroom, and the locker rooms. It's the diesel brush truck, so that when the squad, you know, starts up, turns on, the exhaust fumes come in, we open the overhead doors, clear things out, and continue on with business. This is the rest of the garage. That's the piece of apparatus I was talking about. We store the, this is our wintertime storage for the radar trailer. This garage here is what we use for processing evidence or holding a seized vehicle and doing some minor maintenance. And then this past winter was one of the places where we brought the cruisers to thaw them out one at a time. Here is one of our storage areas. This was originally, you will remember Bob Notton, Detective, Medfield Police Department, this was his photo lab. And this ended up being a storage room, evidence room, and also, there is a table, because this was also, for a period of time, the lunchroom. And the other interesting aspect of the lunchroom is that's the sump pump going out to sewer. So, you know, not, not the best circumstances. From here, we go to the fire side of the building, and Chief Bill Kingsbury?
Thank you. Bad news, it doesn't get any better. The following slides will show safety concerns for personnel and operational inefficiencies due to lack of space. Currently, the responding personnel enter through the side entrance door, as you see here. Once inside, you shuffle between the front of the apparatus and the overhead doors, a space that's about 16 inches wide. Hopefully, the doors aren't going up as you pass by. As you make your way to the gear racks to get dressed, it's somewhat of an obstacle course as you pass between the apparatus. You have to be careful because if, if the floor or your shoes are wet, it's very slippery. We've had a few slips and falls. One firefighter hit his head on the cab door and required stitches. The gear racks, as you can see in this photo, are located between the apparatus. A firefighter has very little room to get dressed. The space is about 18 inches wide. While dressing, firefighters are being exposed to moving apparatus. I've always been concerned about someone getting caught and being dragged out the door. They're also being directly exposed to the vehicle exhaust fumes. If you can see that, the pointer, that's the exhaust pipe of this truck, so when it starts, it blows on whoever's standing here or on the gear. Then, once dressed, if there isn't enough room to pass by, if someone is beside you getting dressed, so you have to wait, which delays our response. This is a typical storage in the apparatus space. On this wall of the station, we keep medical equipment, like backboards, our medical oxygen supply, and the washer for decontaminating our gear. We have no room for a dryer. All equipment and gear stored in the apparatus space is being exposed to diesel exhaust. Here you can see our inability to remove and service the ambulance cart. We are unable to clean and decontaminate the ambulance and equipment unless we put a piece of apparatus outside. It's difficult in the winter when it's freezing out. This is an overhead view of the apparatus floor. It's like a jigsaw puzzle. The conditions are very cramped. Each piece of the apparatus, most of which had to be specially built as, as a designated parking spot based on the vehicle's overall length. Due to the cramped conditions, stop locks are placed on the floor, so another piece of apparatus isn't hit while backing in. With the current conditions, the next replacement pumper will not fit in the station. During the recent blizzard, a piece of apparatus was moved to the DPW in order for us to relocate the four-wheel the four-wheel-drive brush truck, squad truck that you saw in the police department so it would be readily available during the storm. When I became chief 26 years ago, there wasn't an office for the fire chief. All the business was conducted in the front of the dispatch area. Being creative, we converted the ladies' room that was being used as storage in a small kitchenette into the current office. The men's room was relabeled unisex. There's room enough for myself and one other person, so it's difficult to have a confidential meeting if you need to meet with more than one person. All current plans are stored here. All plan reviews are done at the conference room table in the meeting room. The basement, which, when the station was built in 1962, was designated a fallout shelter. Department members converted it into a dayroom, bunk room, kitchen, office space, and storage area. The space is small, but we've made do. It works for two to three people, but way too congested when there are more staff on during a major storm. In this space, sandwiched between the utility room and the oil tank storage closet, is the shift lieutenant's office. It also serves as our secure medical record storage. It always smells like fuel oil. There's a small bunk room and a Murphy bed, but if there are any more than three on duty, we have to set up carts in the meeting room, as was the case this winter when there were 10 of us on duty during the storms. In the utility room, we have our furnace, all of our medical supply storage, and as you can see, it also serves as our gear dryer.
Well, before we get into the design, I'd just like to say the chiefs deserve special commendation for making do with what they have. They've done a commendable job just getting... So let's talk a little bit about where we stand today and how we'd like to proceed forward. What we have here is a site plan. Most of you should be familiar with this intersection. It's pretty important in town. But frame of reference is Dale Street to the top of the slide and North Street to the right. It's the exact same site that the existing facility exists today. During that study period that John had mentioned previously, we examined multiple sites around town. We examined other existing buildings. We looked at the overall town ownership of land and decided that this is still the best location for the police and fire station. It does require some changes to that site, however. The existing dirt lot would go away as the public safety building would need to take over that entire site. But we did want to make sure and preserve the basketball court to the Adams Street side of the lot, as I know that's a town use that everybody enjoys. But in terms of overall ingress and egress of fire and police vehicles, to the North Street side, the main police, I'm sorry, the main fire truck access would be still egressing from the building in that direction. It's deemed the best way for them to use their equipment. And then the opposite side, on the Dale Street side, would be the main ingress and egress for the police vehicles. This is just a quick plan showing across the street. Here's Dale Street to the bottom, North Street's still on the right. This is the existing FAFF center, and this is a new parking lot that would be added to allow for those vehicles that currently park on the dirt lot to be parked across the street, and they'd be mainly used for, solely used for school parking, teacher parking, et cetera. This also helps with bus drop-off, drop-off as you have less people crossing the street during normal bus hours. And this was reviewed very closely with the Park and Rec Commission since they use that field that is currently there. And one of the things that we chose to do was to incorporate a path that would direct students and youth with their coaches to the fields out behind the Dale Street School. So you can see that to the top side here, as well as some additional fencing that would be added to the lot to allow usage, safer usage of land to the North Street and Dale Street front side. These are the current plans that are proposed for the new public safety building. Pretty simple. Red is fire, blue is police, and yellow would be shared space. So that's just a frame of reference as we walk through this. First floor on your left, second floor on your right. Just wanted to touch on a few special things about what we're adding to this building that don't exist today. As the chief mentioned, Police Chief Meany mentioned, in terms of how they currently transfer prisoners, it's a very unsafe condition, not only because of the drop-off, but because of anyone who's coming into the facility is probably not happy to be going in the back door. So we want to make sure that not only are the prisoners safe, but the police officers are safe in transferring prisoners. So to the left side of the building here is a new Sallyport. A Sallyport is basically a secure garage that allows the police vehicles to drive in. The door shuts. There's no way to open that door from the inside of the space. It allows the officers to transfer an unruly passenger into the holding and booking cells with little risk for the prisoner themselves or the police officer. This is standard for police stations today. We do not currently have this, and thus, the police officers and the town are at risk for injuries. The other thing that has come a long way is how we book and hold prisoners. The current facility dating too far back is woefully inadequate and puts the town at a higher risk because there are risks of prisoners hanging themselves, et cetera, such that the chief has to position an officer outside of one of those cells right now 24/7 to watch that prisoner as long as they're there to make sure that nothing happens, just as a way to protect the town. The large room in the center here is a new IT room that will hold the servers for the town IT. This is a 24/7, 365 facility with full backup power. This allows the town to protect its electronic information. To the middle, you have all police lockers. Again, this is built to today's standards in terms of lockers and what are required for ADA access for men and female officers. And there is some small growth, which I'll touch on later, for potential future officers, but it's, I believe, three lockers. Is that right, chief? Three? So, and then from the fireside to the bottom, we have the majority of the, the largest space in the building is the apparatus bay. So that will contain just the apparatus that exists today with one exception, which is half a bay for a new ambulance that is planned for the future. We do not currently have that, but that is the only growth that is built into the apparatus bay design. Then there's some dispatch space, some small other miscellaneous fire space. Then the yellow space here adds a couple of things. It's a new emergency operations center and training space for both departments. This is something that I think was indicative of the need for it this recent month of February when the town public safety officials, DPW officials, administration were all huddled in Mike Sullivan's office trying to cram around a conference phone. We do not currently have a facility in town that can serve as an emergency operations center, and this is proposed to be able to serve that purpose. There is also a small fitness room. The intention behind this is that, especially on the police side, but even on the fireside, the physical fitness is important to this use. It's aimed to keep all of the firefighters and police officers in the building even after their shifts. There are longer-term issues to address in terms of police officer and firefighter health and physical fitness. The equipment for this space would be donated by another group. It's not included in this current budget. It would just be the space for them. Then there's also a triage space right here, and that is for walk-in medical cases. So as time has gone on, more and more of the calls are for medical cases and less and less for fire as building codes and fire protection technology has caught up. So they do have a lot of walk-ins. So a little bit more detail about the apparatus bay. Again, this just shows all of the vehicles that currently exist with the one exception of an additional ambulance that's planned for the future. The reason why that's planned for the future is currently if the existing ambulance is down, town then needs to call for mutual aid to another town. That also, as you can imagine, increases response times. So the goal is to have one main ambulance with a spare. That way, if one is down for maintenance, we no longer need to use mutual aid. Also, to the bottom, here is the SEBA room, and that's really to maintain the breathing apparatus that the fire personnel need in order to fight fires. This is a current elevation, basically showing the two main sides of the building. The architecture was planned to be somewhat close to the architecture of town hall and be something more than just a simple box. The materials would be mainly brick and some what's called a cementitious board up here. When we look at materials for the building envelope, a lot of things have changed since we built the previous building. Energy codes have changed, structural codes have changed. So we also wanted to make sure that when we were looking at them, we wanted a building that was low maintenance because the chiefs maintain their own facility. They don't have someone to do that, so we want to make sure they're not having to, every couple of years, repaint the building, look at all these other issues. So we look heavily into what those materials should be. This is a 3D rendering. I know a lot of people have seen. It just shows what the facility might look like. So let's talk a little bit about how big the building is. It's very large compared to what it exists today, and there's a reason for that. The building is woefully inadequate right now in terms of meeting today's current needs. However, there is some future planned growth, but it's only about 7% of the size of the building. So if this building were built just to today's needs and today's utilization, only 7%, it would only be 7% less than the existing square foot, than the proposed square footage. So if we just did that, we started with that base building of what it would take to get from 1960 to 2015. The proposed square footage is 38,000 square feet. Then there's some growth, especially on the fireside, mainly for the fire operations have changed a lot, and it's harder and harder to get volunteer firefighters. The town, and that's true nationwide, it's not just of Medfield. Fire departments are having more and more to bring on full-time staff. In order to do that, we need to have accommodations for them, so there's some growth built in in terms of bunk rooms, et cetera, to allow for that growth, again, with our view of a 50-year window. Base space is there. That's the second line, about 900 square feet for an additional ambulance in the future. Office space, about 550 square feet of total administrative office space of growth, and then additional locker room space of approximately 325 square feet, which brings us to our proposed square footage of 40,844 square feet. So how does that compare to other towns? These are some recent public safety facilities that are combined, and it's important that we show you combined facilities because there are some efficiencies to having both operations in one building. This is a list of recent public safety buildings that have been proposed or been built, and as you can see, we're falling around the same range and somewhat in the middle of where that stands size-wise. So let's talk about money. As John mentioned, to get to this point today, we've come to town meeting multiple times and appropriated 1.35 million to date to get to the design documentation, to work with our consultants, et cetera, to get us here to the point where we have a firm price. We know how much this building costs today. So we currently have a construction, I don't even want to call it a budget because this is exactly what it will cost, obviously barring the construction process, but the current bid is for 15.1, 15,167,000, and that was opened just a few short weeks ago. The temporary police and facilities, sorry, temporary police and fire facilities would be done as efficiently as possible. We would take the fire department, move it to the new DPW garage, and make best use out of that. And then the police would rent a space on West Mill Street, and so there's a line item of $350,000 to support that. The architects and engineers' fees to go from this point through construction are additional $398,000. Project manager and clerk of the works, this is a requirement of the state in public construction. We use Dataless, and they have been fantastic on the DPW. That would be $488,000. Then there's other miscellaneous costs for legal, financing, testing, et cetera, that would amount to $355,000. Furnishings and equipment of $600,000. Dispatch and radio equipment, $380,000. And a contingency. Contingency is our insurance to make sure that, number one, we're not coming back to you in a couple of years and asking for more money. It's our way of making sure that anything that's unseen or unknown at this time could be covered. So we have $1 million currently in contingency. That gives us a total appropriation of 18.75 million, which is what we're asking you to approve tonight. That is less than what we had had out. I know a lot of people have heard the number 19 million. We've since, because of the budget, the short, the bid price being lower, we were able to lower that number. As well as, I think, another important thing is the DPW garage came in $750,000 under budget, and we would allocate those funds to this. I think that's important because what we want you to understand is, when you say yes to giving us a certain amount of money, we're not there to spend every dime of it. We're here to protect taxpayer money. We're here to make sure that it's used in a proper way, and that with the hard work of the committee, with Ken Feeny, with our consultant group on the DPW project, that project came in over 7% under budget. And we want to make sure that if we can get this approved, we will also do the same here and come back to you and say we did not spend all your money. So if that is the case, we're basically asking for 18 million in new borrowing. The total appropriation has to be approved at 18.75, but the total new borrowing is only 18 million. So construction costs vary widely in geography and in types of building. So we want to make sure and show you a comparison of where we are relative to some other recent projects. And a construction cost per square foot is a good comparison. Basically, if you think about your house, a 2,000-square-foot house built with very basic finishes, very, very basic heating and ventilation systems, may cost you, say, $100 a square foot to build. But if you all of a sudden start throwing marble everywhere and you've got, you know, central air, maybe it's $200 a square foot. By comparing the same sizes, it's able to give you an equivalent of how we're doing in terms of the types of systems, the types of materials we're using on this project. And what you can see by this slide is that we have a proposed construction cost per square foot of $371 a square foot. That is 90 to 100 dollars per square foot less than these surrounding communities. The key here is that we're being conservative. We're not out just throwing in everything that we can to make this, you know, some exorbitant facility. We're being very cautious about where we spend our money, especially on the initial So what does that mean for you? As we look at an $18 million new borrowing at the current estimated rate of 4%, the median home assessment for 2015 is 586,000 in Medfield. For that particular person, if your home were the median, it would represent a $398 per year increase in your taxes, plus, I'm sorry, going down to a low of 199 over the course of the 20-year borrowing period, for an average of around 299. The left column just gives you a range, and you can all sort of figure out where you fall within that range on how that might impact you. So why now? Construction costs are not going down. This building or any building is not going to get cheaper. Escalation is rising at about 5% to 8% per year, and interest rates will be rising shortly. The Federal Reserve just indicated this week, this past week, that they're going to let... The Federal Reserve just indicated this week, this past week, that they're going to move up their time schedule for raising interest rates. So, now is an excellent time to build. The town's debt capacity and debt limits are at reasonable levels relative to where bond ratings may view us. But the key summary here is that this facility will serve the town for 50-plus years. It will address the changes in how the police and the fire services are given to the town, and it will address a critical town need with the IT services, as well as reducing overall risk from liability from incidents because of a building that is out of date. It brings the building to current codes, current regulations, encouraged standards of use. And construction costs, as I mentioned, are only going to go up from here, so delay will certainly cause a significant increase. With that, I'd like to open it up to questions or actually...
Thank you very much. Okay, we're now going to open the floor for factual questions or any points of clarification. So, I invite anybody who has such a question or needs a response from one of our speakers around a point of clarification to please approach either microphone. We'll just alternate the microphones. When you get to the microphone, if you could please just state your name and identify yourself by way of address or any, if you have any, if you're on any town committee or board. Microphone number one.
Mark Green, Ten Row to Denny Nav. And this is for Mike Sullivan, I guess, because he has all the numbers. I'm not sure if it's somewhere in what you mentioned, but there's a certain amount of unfunded pension liability that the town considers, and is that rolled into one of the numbers or does that add on top of?
No, we have a, we're members of the Norfolk County Retirement System, and the last figure I've seen on the unfunded pension liability was around 14 million. We have been setting aside funds for that over the years, accumulating interest on monies we did set aside, and we have about 4 million of that covered. So, it's roughly $10 million unfunded liability. We do have something that every city in town and every government in Massachusetts is facing right now called OPEB liability. It's funding retirement benefits for retirees, health insurance primarily. And we have to have actuarial study done every two years. We're currently having a new one done. The last figure is around 43 million. We have about 1 million set aside for that. These are enormous liabilities that every city in town is facing, and at least we're, we've started to deal with it, and we're facing up to it. We're setting aside about $400,000 a year towards that liability. And it doesn't sound like a lot, but when you do that over a number of years and you start investing, and the interest earnings on that accumulate, it mounts up very quickly. So, yeah, we have pension liabilities. We have retiree health insurance liabilities on top of that, as every city in town does.
So, that gets included, I'm sorry, but in the overall number, over 20 years or 10 years or how does it?
It's, you don't fund that as part of a debt budget. You fund that as a separate appropriation. We have a separate pension budget in our operating budget, and we have, right now, we're on the health insurance for retirees. We're doing part of it as a pay-as-you-go system, but in addition, we're doing about, I think, 1.3 million pay-as-you-go. In other words, we pay the premiums currently for retirees. On top of that, we're putting aside, we're trying to put aside $400,000 a year to start funding the unfunded liability.
All right. Thank you. Well, thank you. Microphone number two.
Hi, Megan Sullivan. I'm on Wichita Road, and I'm on the Saligways Committee. I heard mention of meeting spaces, gathering spaces that might be in the building. Could you describe that and how they might be used?
So, there's a couple of possibilities. The main large space, I don't know if you can see it with the lights on, but there's a large space right here, right by the main entrance, which is the Emergency Operations Center. Obviously, if it's being used for emergency operations, it's not available, but if it's not being used for police or fire training or for emergency operations, it would be available for town usage, whether it be things like giving our friends at the Warrant Committee a larger room than the little tiny one over at Town Hall, or other boards, committees, et cetera, that would be free to use it as well. There is a smaller space up on the upper floor, just above the main entrance, that could be used. It's really geared towards the police and fire being able to collaborate with each other, but it's also available if necessary.
Could you just tell me about how many people it would seat, or could you have a brownie meeting there?
The smaller one is about, I'd say, 8 to 10. The training room, I believe, is 40, almost, almost 50, sorry, almost 50.
So, you could have big groups in there and?
Yes.
Activities?
Yes. And it's a pretty safe place, too.
It would be safe, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Microphone number one.
Robert Herbsy, Resevon Cross Street. I was at the information session a couple of weeks ago, attended by, I think, 18 people other than the people who had to be there. And it mentioned in the, in the meeting that the dispatch room would have to have bulletproof glass on the dispatch, if I heard that correctly?
That's correct. There's ballistic, ballistic-resistant glass. Depends on, obviously, the caliber of the weapon being used.
Yeah, I'm sure if someone walks in with a large, yeah, it's good, okay. I was just wondering, out of curiosity then, why is the dispatch room placed on the outside of the building where there's additional windows as opposed to being placed somewhere internally where you could save money on, you know, not having to install bulletproof glass on a room like that?
The dispatch room serves multiple purposes. It's not just for dispatch. It also is the main control point for the building, so it needs to control the main entry right here. So, if someone comes in off the street and they're being chased by somebody, they can be buzzed in. That's a secure point right there, that door right there. So, it's a safety issue more than just a convenience issue.
Okay, thank you.
You got one more if you want?
Go ahead.
And the other part of the answer to that question, that's a very good point because a lot of public safety buildings put their dispatch area dead center in the middle of the building, and exactly for that reason, so that it's isolated from the outside. In a, in a previous department, I was involved with the design of that building, the dispatch area was put dead center in the middle, but what they did is they put a skylight all the way up through the center of the building to the roof, which, one, used up a lot of space on the second floor that nobody could use, and within a week or two, the pigeons had found it. It was essentially disgusting, and it was closed off. So, one of the trade-offs, and I'll say that I, you know, I'm okay with it, is you have the dispatch on the outside of the building, but you use that type of glass to provide the measure of safety, but dispatch also knows what's going on outside, so sometimes they can see things coming before they get there. So, it's an excellent point, very valid point. I weighed that over a lot before I went with it, but I did end up feeling that this is the way to do it, bullet-resistant glass on the outside, but, you know, some feeling of what's going on outside and some view of the outside also for someone that's stuck in that place for sometimes 16 hours at a shift. Thank you.
Thank you. Microphone number one.
Hi, Bill Harvey on Tupperware Drive. I'm also on the Water and Sewer Board. You had a slide that compared the total construction costs on a per-square-foot basis. Do you, I see Medfield's, and the construction cost of 15.2. Do you have that figure based on the total appropriation? Because I think maybe on a better apples-to-apples basis, you might want to use that instead of just the next bond raise.
The reason we use construction costs is because when, again, a building may be very different in terms of how you actually get there for another facility. So, say Sharon may not have a building to demolish, so that may not be in, their site, their site construction costs may be very different. Temporary facilities may not be necessary in another town. So, really, when we're looking at construction costs, the main, that's something that's easy to compare because it's ground-up construction, and it doesn't take into account some of those other fees. So, in terms of the overall, those aren't always available either, what the soft costs are and how we can break those out. A construction cost, because it's a public bid, is clearly, we're able to access that information. So, we could look at doing a comparison for that. I don't have those numbers in front of me, but I also don't know particularly what Sharon is spending for what we call soft costs. And the soft costs are the architect's fees, the legal, the financing, the site acquisition. All of those things are included in what's called soft costs.
Yeah, I guess part of my point is that you've already spent money on this project, and that should be put into the construction costs.
No, those are soft costs.
To compare with the, with the Sharon costs, which is a combined building.
So, these, these numbers are the same numbers. So, the architectural fees, the money we spent to get here, is in what we call the soft cost budget. That is not part of a construction cost. The construction cost is simply the contract that we sign with the contractor to build the facility. It does not include the fees that we pay the designers, the consultants, the legal fees, et cetera. And the same is true of the other facilities. Those other facilities do not include soft costs either.
Okay, that was the other, that's the core of the question.
Glad I clarified that.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions, points of clarification? Okay, if the, microphone number one.
Jim Nail from Hartford Street. Could you bring up the slide that compares the size to different towns? Because what struck me about that is towns like Norwood, Andover, Sharon, larger, certainly in population, perhaps even in square area, square-footage area, probably more commercial real estate, which probably has higher requirements for the kind of fire protection, public safety they need, and yet, our building is, you know, in pretty close to the same size. So, I'm still trying to scratch my head of how we got to the size building we have, given that I'm, I'm just not sure why our needs are sort of in the same realm as those other towns.
Good question.
So, I'll start that off, but also, if the chiefs want to chime in, the, the size of a police and fire station is not directly correlated to population. If we have X number more houses, we're not going to need necessarily three more police officers or three more firefighters. That's something that we looked at when we started the early planning of this. In terms of programming, what we did is we hired consultants that sat down with our chiefs and worked through how they operate. These are all combined facilities, and that's important because comparing it to other towns that may have, for, as an example, Norwood, Norwood does have substations, is that correct? No, I'm sorry, I'm thinking of Westwood. So, these do not, but some, some facilities like Westwood, which I had on my other comparison slide, has a series of buildings to, in order, they have substations for their fire as well as a main building. Those, those types of things impact the overall square footage because there's certain minimums. For something like Norwood, yes, it's definitely a larger town. It definitely has different firefighting operation because of the commercial impact, but these were the most recent that we could come close to comparing, as opposed to something, say, in Great Barrington that isn't going to be even close to a comparison. But there's no real direct correlation between a population size and a square foot. What our architects did is they sat down with the police and the fire chief, and they worked through, how do you operate what is absolutely essential to perform that operation? And then, the projected growth, which we discussed of how is this operation going to change in the next 50 years? And as I showed on the other slide, only 7% of that is projected growth. But we are trying to be conservative and make sure that we do build in some growth because this building has to last us for 50 years.
Okay, if there are no other questions, we're going to open the floor to discussion and debate and comments. If I could ask proponents to please line up at microphone number one. If you're an opponent of the motion as it was presented by the Warrant Committee, I'd ask that you line up at microphone number two, and we'll just pause for a minute while we do that. So, proponents at microphone number one. If there are people that want to speak in opposition to the motion, they can line up at microphone number two.
I have a question.
Okay.
Kevin Ford, Flintlock Lane, Medfield, like Mr. Sullivan, I have a cold also. So, maybe I caught it from you, Mike. Anyways, how many, what's the accommodation made for people sleeping within the facility itself?
Sure, I'll bring that up on the floor plans. So, to this side on the second floor is basically a dorm. It's a small dorm. There are seven rooms, seven bunk rooms, and this is where the large part of the growth is built in, especially on the fire side. There's enough space to accommodate a completely full-time department. We're not there yet. We recognize that. So, day one, it would not be fully utilized because we're only part ti, partially full-time. So, but the plan is to have a building and a facility that can operate as a completely full-time department, since that's where fire operations are heading.
Okay. This question is for you, chief. The building is up, beautiful. Oh, by the way, that clock tower is something else. I love it. The question is, what is your position on becoming a full-time fire department employees? You have, what I can see, seven or eight people that are full-time now. What would you be bringing that up to once the building is completed?
Well, that, that'll be determined by you people.
That's you. You have to make the recommendation.
It's, it's on the radar. I've said before, this isn't build it and they'll come. This is build it because they're coming. It's, I can't put an exact date on it. Our next logical step is to go to the paramedic service, level of service with the ambulance. But when it comes about, I don't know, probably.
Do you think it would be within two years of the facility being built?
I think it'd be later than that. But again, it would be, it would be presented. It's not on the radar right now, but it will be presented, and then, it's up to the people to decide whether they want it or not.
One other question. How many fire calls have you had? Are they incl, on the increase or decrease?
We run around, we do about 1,200 calls a year, you know, 600 fires, 600 ambulance. So, it, it kind of goes back and forth a little bit, but we're, we're kind of right around the 1,000 to 1,200 runs a year.
So, has that been fairly consistent over the years?
Yes.
It has.
Yeah. Medicals have been going, going up in the past.
Yeah, of course.
But...
Well, I'd like to say that, chief, you do a good job. You have a great reputation, and I'm very pleased to have you as a fire chief. And sir, you do a great job, too, and I think you're doing a great job. Your people like you, and I like you.
Okay, microphone number two.
I guess I have to say it one more time. Robert Herbsy, Resevon Cross Street. I kind of wish there was a microphone 1.5, somewhere between not wanting to do this and wanting to do this.
That's this one.
As I, as I, as I, as I look at the numbers, though, I really have concerns about, about moving forward on a building of this scale. When I look at a town like Sharon, which, you know, I was told, "Go compare us to Sharon." And, you know, we talk about the types of calls and all that, but I look at things like the financial base that a town like Sharon has. Sharon would have to peel back about 30% of their revenue plus to get to what we generate on our taxes in a year. They are a much bigger town. Their financial ability is a lot larger. They have more people, yes, but they also have a larger commercial base. So, I worry that since we're about 30, 30% smaller financially, but yet, we're putting in a building that is less than 20% smaller, that there's, there's a difference there. And I'm concerned about that difference. I'm concerned that the per cost to us as a taxpayer is much higher than it is in a town like Sharon. And I don't know if we can afford to do that, especially with other projects coming down the pipeline. I also worry, too, about the appearance of minimization and cost savings. I worry about things, I know everyone's mentioned the clock tower. If you're a member of LinkedIn, I've mentioned the clock tower, and I worry about appearance. At $371 a square foot, you're looking at a 300 and some odd square foot area of building plus infrastructure, plus extra roof, plus this, plus that, and just to do the quick math, you're talking at over $120,000. And they were very excited about coming in at 1% under their budget, which 1% of 19 to 20 million dollars, somewhere in that ballpark, you know, is what, 200,000? So, what I'm saying is, is that I worry about how much is going into this building. When I've looked at other plans, other versions of this plan, there is a, you can look at them. There were other, you know, ways of doing this. One of the cons on one of the other plans was no room for the hand... One of the cons on one of the other plans was no room for the hand tub in the entryway. The hand tub, the old antique fire, I guess, hand pump, get water out of a pond or something and move it, you know, type of apparatus. And that was listed as a con on the official documents about building a, a building that would be partially refurbished and partially built. And that's why I worry. I worry that that makes it in. And I have all the respect for police and fire. My father was a volunteer fireman for years and years, and one of my memories as a kid is that pager going off at all hours of the night, and him rushing out, you know, to take care of, you know, fires in our town. So although I have that respect, I try not to wrap that emotional aspect into what we're doing, because what we're doing is largely financial. Do I believe we need a new building, and why I need microphone 1.5? Yes. Do I believe we need a building of this scope, and do I believe it's really going to affect things we do in the future with our other projects? Yes, as well. I don't believe we are Sharon. I just don't. And even if it's from a call standpoint, I don't believe financially we are Sharon, or we are one of the bigger towns in the area. When I asked what our population has grown since 1980, it's minimal. It is a minimal population growth. And when I went to a recent planning board meeting, quote, "There is not room to do big, huge building projects anymore." All the open space is being bought up, you know, so our growth in town isn't going to be huge. So again, I worry about things like the clock tower, that is, until someone mentioned it as a gateway, I doubt anybody in this room, except if you had an architectural background, knew that that was the purpose of that clock tower, a gateway to the center of Medfield. I don't know if I want to pay $120,000 plus for a gateway. Would I love a beautiful clock out in the courtyard or wherever, outside, you know, we can celebrate that we have a great company like Electric Time in town? Excellent. I think that would be great, maybe it could be donated, it wouldn't be on our tab.
I'm going to ask that, you take 30 seconds just to conclude your remarks.
I'm sorry. I haven't spoken 12 years, so I'm making up for it.
Doesn't work that way, actually. Some of these speak a little bit here 50 years, and they haven't spoken. It would be a long meeting.
But anyway, what I'm trying to say is that I think there's more that we can do. And with our history of voting things down, the senior center, the DPW building, the go-back-and-please-do-it-again, I'm kind of, I wish that we had options. I wish that in the two or three years of planning, we were given options, not just an ultimatum, either do this, or it's going to be more expensive. You know, people expect options. When you go to Amazon and shop, you want options. Everybody wants options.
Microphone number one.
Thank you. Dan Bible, 23 Green Street. I'm a co-chair of the Historic Commission, but I'm speaking as an individual. I've worked for the Mass. State Police for 25 years, mostly dealing with local police departments throughout the Commonwealth. I've been in any number of police stations. I can't speak about fire stations very much, Chief Kingsbury. I've been in police stations throughout my career there. I've been in some very beautiful stations and some very decrepit stations. What we have in Medfield is a decrepit station. It's not suitable for the people who work there, and it's not suitable for the community. What we need is something that works both for the police department and for the community. I'm not crazy about paying more in taxes either. When my kids were in school, I wasn't crazy about paying for more taxes for schools, but I paid for those because it was necessary, not just for me, not just for today. And what we're asking for today is something that's, that we're going to have to live with for 50 years. I think it's worth doing, it's worth doing for, not just for the police and fire, it's worth doing for the town of Medfield.
Thank you. Any other comments? If there are none, we're going to put this to a vote. I'd ask the members of the stage, if they would, to take a seat in the, in the front row. Thank you very much to the Permanent Planning and Building Committee, to Chief Kingsbury, to Chief Meeting, and to the Board of Selectmen, and to Mr. Sullivan. Thank you. I'm going to make them sit down here. Okay, as you know, our standard protocol would be to do first a voice vote, and then a hand vote, and then a standing count as necessary. I want to remind everyone that this does require two-thirds vote for passage. The motion that was presented by Mr. Sullivan is the motion that is on the floor. So please, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Could I see a hand vote? All in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? I'm going to declare that it passes by the two-thirds required. Okay, let me just very importantly remind everybody that there is a town election. The deed is not done. There's a town election on March 30th, next Monday, that is required for the continuation and the advancement of this project. We also have a contested school committee election with two very capable and able and qualified candidates, so that's a privilege for us in Medfield, so please come out and vote next Monday, December 30th. Thank you very much for being here. Thank you, Chris Allen. Yes, first I thank people. Okay, I wanted to thank everyone, thank the voters, Medfield TV. And now I need a motion for a vote to dissolve. I have a motion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we'll see you. Annual town meeting in about four weeks, the last Monday of April. Thank you very much for coming out.